Whatever Rich Hughes was making at the time.
Fifty nine. Fifty nine something?
Fifty nine.
I think so.
Still, my question is, if you wanted to be or decided to retain the position, would you, are you asking for the pay that Mr. Hughes was receiving? Or are you asking the seventy eight thousand for the police chief's salary? Is my mic and myself clear?
I thought I'd explained it.
Could I try to...
Go ahead.
I think I understand it, and I think what you're proposing is that you would be willing to tender your resignation as city administrator. You would retain your duties as full-time active chief of police from now on into the future. And your compensation would be at the rate of the seventy eight thousand dollars a year between the present time and May thirty first commencing June first, the pay rate would be at the fifty nine thousand. Do I understand?
That is correct.
Thank you for your question. Bob, you referenced the personnel handbook in our ordinances, section one fifteen dot oh six oh. It also references the personnel handbook. It says, "Personnel regulations not addressed in this chapter shall be set out in the city's personnel handbook and changed by the city council from time to time. Standhandbook being filed in the office of the city clerk." One of the subsequent sections below that that is addressed in that chapter is section one one five dot two four, city administrator, and the method of hiring and firing or removing. So it's not actually addressed by the personnel handbook. It's addressed in the ordinance.
The remo... That's correct, yep. The removal of...
So why would you think that the personnel handbook should then be consulted during the process of removal when it's actually addressed in the ordinance, which the ordinance takes, it takes precedence over the personnel handbook?
May I answer that?
Say that.
I read one fifteen dot oh six oh.
May I answer that clearly? I think it's a series of steps, and if there is the final removal, clearly the ordinance controls it. But before we get to that stage, by our handbook, we're supposed to like give notice to and meet with and try to improve because it's a series of steps before we get to this.
But that's for, that's for positions that are not addressed in the ordinance, so...
The way I read it, I think it's for anyone who is being admonished by a supervisor.
It specifically states, "Personal regulations not addressed in this chapter shall be set out in the city personnel handbook." That is addressed in that chapter. So is the city clerk, the city treasurer, the city collector, and the city attorney.
Well, the point.
Yes.
Let me make this point. I don't have any problem with one fifteen two forty. I understand Missouri is a right-to-work state, and this simply kind of codifies that in that you have the right at the city council, admittedly. You have the right to come in and you have the right to terminate him without cause or with cause or so, whatever, whatever. But here's the problem, as I see it. When you, as the mayor, meet with him and telling him he's deficient, you know, by your handbook, you gotta give the guy an opportunity to improve and get better, as I understand it. But then when you come to the city council and you say, "I'd like to get rid of him. I want a motion, and I want three-fourths of you to vote in favor of it," and you give some explanation or justification, you know, then I think you've got to be accurate about it. And as I'm understanding what my client is saying, is that your representations made as to his deficiencies were not founded and supported by that. Now, that's what we're here about, is whether or not...
Can I ask for some clarification in your understanding of the employee handbook?
Yeah.
What is your understanding of section two, which the city...
I don't have it. Look, I do have it.
Would you like to copy?
No, I've got it. Which section are you talking about?
Section two, grounds for action. The next paragraph and then also D.
What page is that on?
Thirty-four?
Thirty-one? Section two?
Section two, grounds for action. The following are declared to be grounds for demotion, suspension, or removal of the employee. This list is not exclusive in any such ground.
Give me the page again, because I'm still not with you. What page?
I don't, I don't...
Okay, I think it's on thirty-three, grounds for action, all right.
Following declared to be grounds for demotion, suspension, removal of any employee, this list is not exclusive in any such ground, including those not specifically mentioned herein, may be grounds for immediate removal. And specifically given is acts of incompetence. Is your contention that it would not be, an act of incompetence would not be grounds for immediate termination?
It could if the facts support that, but it can't just be a blanket statement. It's got to be factually supported. But my point is that when you call someone in and say, "I've lost confidence in you," as I read your handbook, it's a series of steps. Our desire is to try to work with an employee, to point out the deficiencies, to try to improve the, the, the actions of the employee, to maybe bring them back into compliance. I do understand, and I do agree, that there are certain things that you can terminate for, but we don't agree that those are factually supported. And I'm simply suggesting that there shouldn't have been, if you had lost confidence in him, there should have been a meeting, and there should have been an opportunity for him to improve or to better himself. But you went from zero to a hundred miles an hour in two days. You went from, you know, Bob had lost confidence in you, to you're gone in two days.
So I, I think that we're getting to the, to the meat of the matter. The difference is not, it doesn't have anything to do with the employee handbook and policy. We're agreed that there is a certain threshold at which immediate termination is a reasonable response. It's in that employee handbook, even though, as Mona points out, the employee handbook may not apply to this particular thing because it's superseded by ordinance. Is our, is our question whether or not the, the reason for removal rises to that level?
Listen, I'll even go further than that. Under one fifteen two forty, you can remove him without any reason. I, I agree with that. But, but this is my point, Mayor. When you accuse him of losing confidence, or whatever it is you accuse him of, incompetency or negligence, or whatever you're accusing him of, I think that incumbent upon, accommit with that and by the handbook, you've got to give him an opportunity to improve and better himself. Now, if you wanted to say, "Oh, no, it's stealing," or one of the other many things that justify automatic termination, okay, fine, you could go directly to a termination. As I said earlier, one fifteen two forty says you don't even need a reason. But when you come here to this council meeting and you ask, even for no reason, "I want to terminate him," and you're asking these eight people to vote, and you start giving them some reasons, they have to be factually correct, in my opinion, because you're asking people to vote on the representations that you have made. If your representations to them are factually inaccurate, then I think that you have done a disservice not only to my client, but to the city council, and therein is where we think the mistake was made. We don't think that your actions were supportive. I know you can do it without cause, except you're asking them to vote and giving them a cause, and you better be accurate. If you had come here and you had said to them, the city council, "I want to get rid of Bob Jenny, no reason at all, he's a great guy, I just would like to hire somebody else," and they all go, "Yeah, I'm in favor of that," I, I don't think he would have much complaint to make about that. But when you sit here before them and you say, "This is what he did wrong. He didn't inform us about the deadlines, he didn't inform us about the funding," and you ask these people to support your position, I think you've got to be factually accurate. And I don't think you are. And I think when the facts are reviewed by this body, they may view it differently than you do, and it could affect their vote.
Counselor, though, at this point, it's, it should be counsel, the members of the council questions.
I agree.
Let's, can we go back to that and say the closing argument?
Yes.
So other questions for Mr. Jenny?
Were you finished, Mona?
Oh, I...
I just have a couple of questions. Was it ever, did you ever, ever, during, between last election and now, or in January fifteenth, the night of the meeting, did you ever say the figure to us, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, ever?
I don't know about to the council, I know I did mention it to the mayor.
Okay, I'm going to say to you as a councilperson, you never told us, told me, and I was at all the meetings except for one, you never said that the LT two project was going to cost the citizens of this city six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, ever.
Okay.
That, right there, is incompetence, because by your own, by your own job...
Shouldn't you have inquired as deputy mayor?
I was, I was the councilperson that inquired the most about that project. And in that, I was so much not, felt as though I was, I needed to under oath.
We need you under oath, and if we'd like to enter a narrative, that would be appropriate, I think, same as it was, was to me, which you are.
So the question is, did you ever mention to the council that it was going to cost six hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
I don't recall.
Okay. And did I or did I not say or ask for a meeting where the engineers would be present? And so that I could have a better understanding that we would have a meeting, so that I could have a better understanding?
Yes.
Of what all was going on?
Yes.
Okay, that's it.
And that was what was, what was arranged at the mayor's request.
Okay, that's all.
Other questions from council?
I have one. Bob, why wasn't there any funding mentioned sometime between August?
I couldn't really give you an explanation.
Ms. Elke, or Lewis, sorry, had asked repeatedly for this information from Mr. Jenny. The mayor is president. Why didn't the mayor ever look at this?
Oh, now you're asking, oh, my God.
No, I'm just making a statement.
You can't make a statement.
Can't make the statement.
You can ask a question, Bob, from Mr. Jenny.
Can I ask him?
You can ask him.
What's up?
No, I'm just making a...
You're the city's keys.
Not now, you can later. I'm not even under oath right now.
I can't make the statement, I have to ask the question.
And you've got to answer the box.
I have to ask him a question. Ms. Lewis has stated that she had asked you repeatedly about the six hundred and fifty, and wanted to know if you had ever stated that too, but you have stated the LT two project in the council meeting several times. Okay, did the mayor ever approach you and ask you for particulars about where you are in the financing?
He inquired as to what the costs were going to be, yeah.
But yet he says that you were incompetent in, in doing your job, and he knew that previously. Is that not true?
The first time I heard him say anything about incompetence was on January twenty.
But he knew the same thing you knew about the cost.
Just to be clear, that you're stating that I knew that the cost was six hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
What I'm saying is, and I think that you did the same thing that he knew, about the cost and about the project, and possibly about the bond and the funding and the timeline.
Okay, I'll be anxious to, when it's appropriate, to respond to direct questions. Any other questions for Bob?
And Mr. Bradley, do you, did you want any other, to call any other witnesses?
No.
Do you have any other informa, any other evidence you want, written evidence other than what you've already seen, and I want to make sure you have the...
Thank you, but no, I don't.
Okay. Then it would be appropriate for the, the city to go ahead and, the mayor to frame the issues and get through the city's witnesses here.
I think I can make an opening statement pretty clearly. This is not about the mayor or the council's awareness of LT two project's deadline. It's about being made aware of a very important funding action that needed to take place in a timely fashion. It's not about how results of a closed meeting were handled, that simply not germane to the council's decision, which happened prior to that, to remove. This has nothing to do with Mr. Jenny's appointment as police chief. It is an entirely separate set of responsibilities, governed by an entirely separate and very well-defined set of removal procedures that cannot be intermixed with the city council. And the appointment was discussed, that this was a full-time additional appointment of responsibilities, professional responsibilities separate from this, the city council. This is about Mr. Jenny's incompetence in executing an essential job function, which has cost the taxpayers substantial money, and which was the final catalyst in the mayor's loss of confidence in Mr. Jenny. Note that the reason I asked for removal was not this LT two problem. It was that I have lost confidence in Mr. Jenny. I was very clear about that in the meeting, that that's why I was asking for removal. I was not offering a cause beyond that. I was giving explanation for why I have lost confidence. My request retains the lost confidence in Mr. Jenny. The city council requires no cause for removal. That decision has already been made by this body. Unless it can be shown that that decision to remove was made in error, the decision of the council should stand. And I will close my opening, and I've already asked Bob the, the other questions that I want, the other questions that, that I have. I think it would maybe be appropriate for me to simply give a narrative. Is that correct, at this point, to move questioning myself?
Yeah, wouldn't it be...
Sure, that's fine.
You just give a narrative, and then you're going to be accorded the opportunity to ask some questions, of course.
I want to review how we got here, to be clear about the facts of the LT two financing failure sequence, which I do consider incompetence. Circuit twenty twelve, the engineer made Mr. Jenny aware of the LT two construction costs and the need for financing. They've known about this since twenty twelve. Ideally, any bond and SRF financing should have been done prior to September of twenty thirteen in order to appear on the November ballot. In order to even have been a possibility, it would have had to have been done prior to January of twenty fourteen in order to appear on the April ballot, a year ago during the previous administration. In May of twenty fourteen, at the water committee, discussion of LT two project was of cursory nature, lasting about ninety seconds. Mr. Jenny says in there, quote, "We have, we may have to seek SRF funding on the LT two project," end quote. If SRF funding were to be the solution, it would have had to have been introduced after or before the October twenty thirteen council meeting for, for ballot and timing of, of SRF administration. The statement he made was not even a possibility because of, of the finance, of requirements of going through a bond. The June twenty-six, twenty fourteen memo to the mayor and council from Kleinger states that the project has been reviewed by city staff. That city staff's point of contact is Bob Jenny. He was our, the city's project liaison and manager, in his professional capacity as a city administrator. It states directly, quote, "Bob Jenny will be determining financing," end quote. It states that we have no remaining bond authority for this project. It anticipates lease purchase financing, which I understand now to be similar to issuing the bonds of, or the certificates of participation. It states that time is of the essence with the deadline of October twenty fifteen. The memo states that the timeline does not allow for bond issue. At this point, it was made clear that any consideration for bond issue or SRF funding would be futile to address the project's deadline, but this is the solution proposed by Mr. Jenny in January. In July of twenty fourteen, at the water committee, discussion of the LT two project was of cursory nature, lasting less than two minutes. It takes, it takes the agreement to use Kleinger, talks about the agreement to use Kleinger for the LT two, to take that to full council. It restates the October twenty fifteen deadline. Again, that's not in dispute. The issue is not, were we informed of this deadline? We were definitely informed of this deadline. Discussion of the engineer payment through a budgeted item was brought up, and part of this was going to be covered by budgeted, a budgeted line item. No discussion regarding financing of construction work was, was in that meeting. Bob Jenny presented the project as being on track, with no concern for any urgent matter requiring solution or consideration. In July of twenty fourteen, full council meeting, the topic of LT two project was only brought up in the form of a vote, no discussion. The council approved the Kleinger agreement, no discussion regarding financing of construction work. Again, Bob Jenny presented the project as being on track, on track, with no concern for any urgent matter requiring solution or consideration. On January eighth, Bob Jenny presented Mayor Needner with a three million dollar bond issue and the associated SRF funding to cover the LT two project. Bob Jenny indicated that this had to be approved at the January twelfth council meeting, just a few days later, in order to get it on the ballot in time to cover the LT two construction costs, which we now know, there was, that would not have been in time, nowhere near. This was the first time a bond issue was discussed with the mayor of council related to the LT two project. Mr. Jenny could not explain the relationship between the SRF funding and the bond initiative when asked to do so by Mayor Needner, further conflicted with Mayor Needner's understanding from the June memo that I mentioned previously. At this point, Mr. Jenny's failure to act or even understand the critical issues directly relating to his essential job duty became apparent to the mayor. January fifteenth, special council meeting. This meeting was called by the mayor when Bob Jenny could not adequately explain his proposed financing of the LT two construction project. The engineer and bond writer explained that the bond issue and SRF funding solution proposed by Bob Jenny were not possible due to the timeline. I want to note a benefit here. This, this was stated in the June memo above by the engineer. The engineer at this meeting, the January fifteenth meeting, the engineer explained that the costs were known and funding requirements were made clear several years prior. He said he, quote, "Had no idea why the city had not acted," end quote. At this point, I felt that my concern regarding Mr. Jenny's incompetence in handling this project would have been vetted. It's been a few days after that, considering what my courses were, whether it was correctable action or not. I determined it was not, that the level of lack of understanding of such a critical function of city administration, that is so core for us to be able to conduct business and handle a large construction project, was not something that could be remediated, that it rose to the level of incompetence. I looked for a reasonable way out to save some face and requested a resignation. That was not well received. My recollection is that I specifically cited this funding issue, the inability, the failure to bring the funding issue. That's my recollection. I'll stand on it. It was certainly, even if it wasn't there, which I believe it was, contextually what the topic was. It was certainly not about a deadline for the LT two project. When that was not an option to have a resignation per the ordinance, I requested removal. This body removed Mr. Jenny, per the ordinance. He was entitled to this hearing, and that's how we got here. Close by mayor.
A point of order, Mr. Bradley. We actually didn't put the mayor under oath before his narrative, so what I would like to do with your permission, let's do it now and just ask him, if he gave his narrative all over, would it be exactly the same?
That's fine.
And I, just for, Mr. Mayor, well, I should have, right there. Would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that the information, evidence you give of this LT two project is of that?
Absolutely, yes.
And let me just ask you, if you gave your narrative all over again, would it be the same?
Exactly the same. Okay, that's fine.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I do. And then I want to give Bob an opportunity to ask him a question, since he's more knowledgeable of this matter than I. But, Mr. Mayor, let me ask you to tell me very succinctly, what information did Bob Jenny have, which you contend he failed to convey to you or the council regarding the financing that causes you to feel that he was incompetent?
It is my understanding that Mr. Jenny was made aware of the need for a funding solution for the LT two project years in advance of when the proposal came to council. It is the failure to bring that proposal to council, a plausible proposal to council, and a failure to explain the functioning of bond and SRF-related loan that caused me to come to the conclusion that Mr. Jenny is not competent in handling the essential job duty of the capital improvement project that was made.
Okay, let me ask this. Were you aware at all times that this project was going to have to be funded?
Certainly.
In some means. Did you ever discuss that with Bob Jenny?
I relied on his periodic reports, his professional proactive nature to bring my attention to things that required my attention. I required, for instance, in the report where he indicated that SRF, we would probably have to pursue SRF funding, I trusted his professional understanding of the matter, as I believe council trusted, is his understanding of the matter. So yes, I understood that the project would need to be funded, and it was my understanding from Bob's communications in meetings and out of meetings, that the project was on track, that everything that needed to be addressed was being addressed, and that no action was required on my part or the council's part to correct or provide funding.
Is there any information you can specifically point to that Bob Jenny gave you that was false or inaccurate?
Yes.
What?
Mr. Jenny proposed, just as the main one, Mr. Jenny proposed a three million dollar bond to pay for the LT two project in addition to other projects, and it was entirely impossible for that to, that solution to work.
Were you here earlier when Mr. Jenny said that was because of some error that was made in some of the paperwork by some of the others who were assisting?
I was here when he made that comment regarding the sewer and smoke testing, which is an entirely separate project from the LT two project.
But wasn't the ability to get funding for the LT two project a part and parcel of that same state?
Absolutely not. These are entirely... These are entirely different projects. They require, require different requests for qualifications. They, they are managed entirely separately. They are different projects entirely.
Did the moving of the deadline from October fourteenth to October fifteen open a new window of opportunity?
Yes, that was not seized.
Okay. Well, to meet that deadline of October fifteen, what would the deadline be to seize that?
Action in, at the very latest, and it would be questionable. Action would have had to take place in January of twenty fourteen.
To put it on the bond, a bond issue for April?
For April.
Could it be put on later than April?
No.
Or before October?
No.
Could a special election, could a special election have been held?
The, the, the germane restriction, I, I'll add your question. Yes, certainly a special election could be held. I do not know if that would solve the problem. The problem is that it takes a year to eighteen months from the time you start after the bond to the time you can fund a project. It takes a year to eighteen months as told by the engineers at the meeting at the end. Subsequent to that meeting, I've been informed that because of some of the particularities of the LT two project, it would probably take some additional months. And this has to do with the kind of U P light that's available per, and approve the process by state revolving fund. So at least eighteen months is what I'm told by the engineer, by the SRF professionals, by the bond underwriter, or bond writer would be required. So whenever you could get it on a ballot, you got eighteen, from, from, from that time to getting the money, you need eighteen months.
Am I oversimplifying matters to say that your greatest complaint about Bob was with this failure that you claimed he failed to take relating to getting everything set up to get a bond issue on the ballot to get it passed to fund the, the LT two project?
No.
Okay, is there more to it than that?
My greatest complaint is that I have lost complete confidence in Mr. Jenny's ability to do the essential jobs required by city administrator.
I understand, but is your main complaint driving you to your conclusion that he failed to take the action to get this bond issue before the voters to fund this LT two project? Would that be the, the biggest grievance you have?
I believe it would be the most starkly visible grievance that I have.
Good, any others?
Certainly.
Tell me what they are.
Uh, the one that immediately comes to mind is the handling of the insurance bid.
Specific.
Okay. My question is whether this is relevant.
Well, it's relevant in my opinion, and, and I'm asking this question because it goes to your conclusion, you've lost confidence in him.
Can you, your question whether or not I have lost confidence?
No, 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 I'm not questioning that at all. You said it was another reason, the bond issue thing, so tell me specifically.
Okay, um, so ask, ask a question.
Well, give me your specific thinking as to why that's caused you further to lose confidence in Mr. Jenny.
Why the handling of the insurance?
Yes.
Issue during the course of what should be routine duties of issuing a, putting out for bid our insurance policy. We had three respondents to that. Two of them were given additional time to reply. One was not. And that produced a situation where we had to be unfair in, in treatment to one or the other or reject all bids, which is what we wound up having to do. And I consider that an essential job failure.
I'm not meaning to argue with you at all, but I don't quite understand, what was the deficiency by Bob Jenny in that matter? The specific failure or specific actions taken that you find fault with regarding Bob Jenny?
Giving additional time to respond to a bid request to only some respondents and not others is the fault I find in that.
Was there any justification for it? Did he ever discuss it with you?
Um, we did discuss it. The justification was, uh, as I recall, that they said they couldn't get the information in enough time. And I don't have a problem with the extension. I have a problem that if the extension was given to one, it should have been given to all.
Were you privy of that at the time it occurred?
No.
Did Bob ever discuss that with you?
Only after I brought it to Bob.
Did he ever explain to you why he took the action again?
Not to my satisfaction.
Did he ever give you any explanation?
As I said a moment ago, I believe that the response I got from Mr. Jenny at the time was something that they had asked for additional time because they needed more time to produce the documents. And I don't have those notes in front of me.
Because Bob's knowledge is greater about this than mine, I'm going to give him an opportunity to ask any questions if you need to ask. Go ahead.
Basically, the reason the extension was given was...
You want to ask him questions or you want to make a statement later?
I'll just make a statement later.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll be getting to that. We just want to finish up.
I'm done.
Maybe the council has...
Council have any questions?
I have a question. What is the, um, calculated difference to the taxpayers in funding by the participation certificates versus the bond and the interest included on that six hundred and fifty thousand or three million or however that was going to work out?
So in order to assess the magnitude differential between having been able to fund the LT two project with a bond that was then converted to or leveraged through an SRF fund, which would have been the ideal situation for a project of this magnitude. The differential between doing that and what we're having to do, which is issue certificates of participation, is the difference between taking that six, that loan, whatever we need, those financial resources, in this case, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, at one and a half percent, I'm sorry, one point six percent was the latest number that I got compared to a little over three and a half percent. When I ran that through an amortization calculator, I was surprised and figured I did something wrong. So I called the bank and asked the president of Louisiana, um, the Mercantile Bank to please tell me what this difference would be. It's over a hundred and fifty two thousand dollars, the difference. So that failure represents, in my opinion, if we have to call, there's a number of ways to approach the problem now. We do have capital reserves that we could expend. We, there may be other things we're looking, we're in negotiations right now to see if we can move some capital reserves into other situations. But the magnitude of the decision, the failure, to me, is a hundred and fifty two thousand dollars of taxpayer money. That represents equivalent of two years of this highly paid, over two years of, of salary for this highly paid person upon whom we rely for these kinds of recommendations.
And those funds have to be paid back in what manner?
It will directly impact a higher water bill.
Do you want to ask any questions, Bob? Do you want to ask the mayor anything?
I have a question for you. Were you ever set, were you ever aware that the LT two project before January fifteenth? Were you ever aware that it was going to cost six hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
I cannot say that as, as a coun, as a council person, I was not at some point made aware. I, I just, I don't know. It doesn't stick in my mind that that was the case.
You didn't recall that, that, that there was any sort of price tag of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
My assumption was simply that there was this project out there, that it was being properly managed by a professional city administrator and that his elected officials, council and municipal mayor would be made aware of actions and options that we...
The, the Neutre War project was included in that proposal for bond, yet the contractor had already been selected in December. Where was that funding to come from before that proposal and where is it coming from now?
Capital improvement. It was, it was discussed that that was going to come out of capital improvement. Mr. Jenny and I did discuss that when he was trying to explain why this three million dollar bond was sitting at my desk. And the, to the best of my understanding, at that time, on that particular issue was that the hope was to be able to reimburse ourselves from that bond in some way. And I don't understand how in the world that would work. One of the reasons that I had serious questions about this whole bond issue.
How much money is left in the capital, um, with capital improvements?
Capital improvements.
After when Neutre did the so much help?
Um, I'm, I'm not for certain, but I, and actually it's, we're looking at those funds now because we're trying to figure out how to deal with the failure of the water plant. The, I, I believe that that fund is somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollars. So I believe there's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars there to play with. But I, I don't have that number right in front of me. Over two hundred thousand dollars, as was that?
And that's restricted to use for both water, the public works?
It's, it's that particular fund, these funds were created, if you recall, through ordinance when we, by requirement of previous state, participation state revolving funds. So SRF funds created, SRF loans created to necessity for certain accounts. One of those accounts is for capital improvements. Capital improvements is not maintenance. So one of the big differentials that we're having to deal with, for example, is can we, we can't tap those funds to go fix a lock of whatever at the water plant because that's a maintenance. If we go to the level of it being a, something we can draw out of that account, it has to comply with certain engineering requirements. We have to get an engineer, the whole cost and scale thing moves up and it gets more expensive. So it's a little expensive to attack, to use those funds.
Are there any other avenues of finance other than a certificate? Or a local bank can contact you, ask to give us a, a interest rate or?
My, my, I am not a financial expert, just like I'm not a, a financial funding expert for large capital improvements. My understanding from the, uh, from the engineer is that, in effect, that's exactly what we're doing with certificates of participation. We are offering, we are basically borrowing against our future, future operations revenues. And a bank or group of banks or some entity out there is purchasing those and giving us that money to equipment. That would be exactly what you said, that your bank would be financing this. And that has happened in the past. We have issued bonds in the past in Louisiana and, um, the bank in Louisiana, Mercantile Bank, has stepped up and purchased our bonds. And if, when that happens, it happens in the same range of, um, financing rate that the certificate of, certificate of participation happens.
Could that be done at this stage, a local bank that got the bond?
Irrelevant.
That's what we're doing.
No, good.
I do not know who will buy the bond.
Let me ask you a question.
No, not, I don't think we are because we're talking about how much money. Yeah, but I'm talking about can't we just, some other way to take money because we're talking about...
It was reflected to us at that meeting. Really, the only option we have is certificates of participation.
But that was my original question, was that the only way or are there other?
That's the only way it was represented to us by the professionals.
Mr. Mayor, let me just clear something up in my own mind. This, uh, LT two project was some six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is that correct? When did you first know of that cost?
I, I, I do not know when I was first made aware of the actual cost.
Am I correct in my assumption that that number was provided at some point in time by Klinger as the engineer of the project?
Uh, I know for a fact it was provided to the council and, uh, the mayor as early as two thousand and five.
That figure of six fifty or just some estimate?